Good evening. I call the September 24th, 2019, meeting of the Portsmouth City Council to order. And we'll start with me asking my colleagues on council to rise and join me standing for the invocation which will be given by Pastor Michael Porter, Sr., of Twine Memorial Holy Temple. And then I'll ask everybody to stand as Councilman Bill Moody leads us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, Council, citizens, let us bow our heads in prayer. Eternal God, our Father, we thank you so much for your loving kindness in allowing us to be in this forum on tonight. Lord, we thank you for the opportunity to be before your holy presence. Even tonight, Lord, we invoke your presence in the midst of this meeting. Say what two or three are gathered together that you will be in the midst. We ask that, Lord, that you will be here tonight. Guide our lips, our conversation, our manner of respect for one another, and that you will bless the council with the knowledge and wisdom and governing decisions that may be very pertinent to us and our well-being. We thank you for being God above us all. In the midst of the storms and the trials of life, we have to be focused on you because you're the one that guides us through the storms. You're the one that keeps us through times of uncertainties, and we know we need your help with council, with citizens, with civic leagues, and even those that are protecting us, Lord, through dangerous times. We ask that you will ever guide us, that on the wing of your spirit, we consider ourselves blessed, and that be respectful and guided by your holy Spirit through these challenging times which we endure. So now we ask that you will cover us, protect us, and even that we be seasoned with your divine grace, that glory and honor and praise shall always be thine. We ask thy blessing now. In Jesus' precious name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're at that point where we need to do a roll call, and we'll do that electronically. I'll ask my colleagues on council to indicate your presence by hitting the yes button. And Madam Clerk, we have 100 percent attendance. Which brings us to the next item on the agenda, which is approval of amendments. We have the minutes of a regular council meeting of September 9, 2019, the minutes of a call meeting of September the 10th, 2019, the minutes of a regular meeting of September 10, 2019, and a call meeting of September the 16th. Let me restate that. Call meeting of September the 16th, 2019. We'll consider these sets of minutes, their approval the same in one motion.
Move adoption?
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been made and duly seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the question, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
The next item on our agenda is presentations, and council has been, this year, this calendar year, recognizing those foster parents in our city who provide parenting to foster children. And Dr. Patton?
Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council, I'm going to ask Mrs. Pamela Littlehill, the Director of Social Services, to introduce our parents.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of City Council. So we have an awesome family that we're going to introduce to you tonight, so I'm going to ask Mr. and Mrs. Rue and family to please come forward and stand before council.
Right here. Olivia, you would face the audience, please. Yes, ma'am.
Mr. and Mrs. Rue have been foster parents for approximately 12 years. They began fostering because of their love of children. Mrs. Rue stated that even as a child, she has always looked after and tried to care for the children in her neighborhood. The Rue's have provided long- and short-term placement for approximately 150 children. They have legally adopted one son, Deandre, age 16, and are currently in the process of legally adopting a sibling group of four, ages 11, 10, 8, and 6. Because we're in the process of adoption right now, I will not call the children out by name. All of the children in the Rue household are doing well academically. Deandre received a good citizenship award last year, and I believe I was just informed that he's currently on the honor roll for the A student status. Our sixth grader received recognition from the governor for being on the honor roll as well, and also plays the trumpet in the school band. Our fifth grader is now reading above her grade level. She was initially quiet and afraid to speak, however, over the years, she has continued to blossom and become more confident. Our third grader received a good citizenship award as well last year, and our first grader continues to excel academically. The Rue's have assisted children with varying degrees. The children that they have fostered included children with mental health issues as well as medical issues. The Rue's have shown empathy, warmth, and love to all of the children in their care, especially those with a little bit more challenging behavior, because they feel that those are the children who need it the most. Throughout their years of fostering, Mr. and Mrs. Rue have supported relationships between their foster children and their biological parents. They have also served as mentors and have assisted their parents in enhancing their own parental skills. Mr. and Mrs. Rue are truly, truly, an example of what could happen when we invest in the lives of our children. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Isn't this a great example of love? Yes. Let's show that. And we have a token of our appreciation for all that you do. And who should I give this? I see hands coming out. How about if I give it to you? Please, would you all address our audience, please?
In behalf of my wife and I, and all our family members, I thank the mayor, and City Council members, and all the everyone out in the audience for giving us the support and putting your trust in us that we continue to provide these children, and if we have a chance, get us many more. Thank you.
We're going to have to take a photograph, so...
Yes. It is. So I don't know, you might want to get in the middle, narrow. There's a lot of them. Now see how they just did that out of there, still figuring it out?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And this concludes our presentations for the night.
We do have another special presentation, and that's a proclamation, and I'll ask our Director of Economic Development to come forward, please, and join me at the Sergeant of Arms Desk. Madam Clerk, will you read that proclamation?
Yes, sir. And if the members available with the PPIC would also join, the Director?
Yes.
And the Economic Development staff?
If you'll turn around and face the audience. Yeah.
City of Portsmouth, a proclamation. Whereas Manufacturing Day is an annual celebration of modern manufacturing during which manufacturers highlight for their communities, including students, educators, the business community, and elected officials, their facilities, and a collective effort to educate the public about manufacturing career opportunities and improve public perceptions of manufacturing. And whereas recognizing October 4th as National Manufacturing Day in Portsmouth is an effective way to highlight the importance of the manufacturing sector in Portsmouth's economy and to draw attention to the rewarding, high-skilled manufacturing jobs available, as well as supporting and celebrating Portsmouth's manufacturers and educational programs that prepare our future workforce. And whereas the City of Portsmouth, its Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission and its Economic Development Authority are supportive of the efforts of businesses that make up the manufacturing sector of Portsmouth's economy, whether they are related to the port and industrial segments of our economy or otherwise. And whereas today's manufacturing jobs are highly skilled, and they take place in some of the most exciting, innovating work environments anywhere, we should all view Manufacturing Day as a vehicle for inspiring students to pursue manufacturing jobs and strengthen the future of manufacturing by avoiding the talent shortage on the horizon. And whereas Portsmouth recognizes our local businesses that contribute to the city's long-term health and economic development by employing Portsmouth residents and providing products and services around the world, from here in the City of Portsmouth, we hope to empower manufacturers to draw attention to the role they play in our community and understand the economic and social significance of manufacturing. Now therefore, our Mayor John L. Rowe, Jr., of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia, do hereby proclaim October 4th, 2019, as Manufacturing Day in Portsmouth, and urge all of our citizens to join in supporting and participating in this effort.
And I urge everybody to celebrate this important mainstay of our economy. Manufacturing means jobs, and these jobs are highly skilled, and it's very important that we have a good manufacturing sector of our economy. And standing before you are the people who are responsible to making sure that that base is stabilized and grows, and that's the members of the Economic Development Authority and the Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission and our Economic Development Staff. And with this, I'm going to give this proclamation, the original, to our Executive Director and give him the mic to say a few words about how important manufacturing is to our economy.
Thank you, Mayor. Manufacturing Day gives us the opportunity, and first let me say thank you to the Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council for allowing us to recognize this important part of our community and part of our economy. The Manufacturing Day allows us to really champion those businesses, the workers, that are behind some of the products and services that we have here in our city. It also gives us the opportunity to really ignite a fire, if you will, in the next generation of workers in our communities. So with that, I'd like to say thank you, and certainly we'd like to turn this over to our Chairman of our Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission, so he can say a few words.
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Portsmouth Port and Industrial Commission is simply working to try and help build great jobs and great development within the city, and we have a great partnership with the Economic Development, and we are excited to continue to have announcements of bringing great jobs to the city.
Thank you.
Try to get out of it.
Thank you all. Thank you for what you do. Thank you. Our last presentation is somewhat related to manufacturing in the sense that manufacturing is a form of entrepreneurship. And speaking of entrepreneurs, I want to introduce a couple, husband and wife, who have been rock-solid in Portsmouth as entrepreneurs, but more importantly, they have been rock-solid members of the Portsmouth community. And I ask Colonel Ron Peterson and his wife, Roxanne, to join me up here, please. And I'm going to ask Paige Cherry, our former member of council and Vice Mayor and current City Treasurer, and Robert Moore to come forward. Ron has had the opportunity in this lifetime to call many places home. A native of Montgomery, Alabama. He's served both in the United States Navy, but most importantly, in the United States Marine Corps. Ever faithful, simplify. And when you are military, you get a chance to live not only in a great number of places in the United States, but worldwide. Ron is a retired Marine and once a Marine, always a Marine. He's a combat veteran. But after his retirement, he and Roxanne decided to make Portsmouth their home and to establish and open what I call the best Chick-fil-A restaurant anywhere, not just in Portsmouth, not just in Virginia, not just anywhere. And if you haven't been, shame on you, because you've missed a great delight, a great treat. High-quality service, high-quality food, you have been a real asset. But that's only just scratching the surface, because from the very day that they came to Portsmouth, they got immersed in the Portsmouth community. They became part of the fabric of improving the quality of life in Portsmouth, giving their most scarce resource, which is their time, to our community, giving their resources from Chick-fil-A, being there both in good times and in disasters, when we've had those, making sure that people are taken care of. Now I'm recognizing, because this is, that was the sweet part, this is the bitter part. They are moving to Las Vegas to open the first-ever Chick-fil-A on the Las Vegas Strip. Let me tell you something else about Ron. Colonel Peterson managed the Marine Corps' marketing campaign, their branding, and that's $100 million program. And so we want you to continue that marketing effort and market Portsmouth on Las Vegas Strip. We want you to establish a Portsmouth Beachhead in Las Vegas. And to help you do that, we have this gift basket that is just full of Portsmouth items. So when we all go on that Chick-fil-A on Las Vegas, we want to see the Portsmouth lightship with the banner well displayed.
Yes, sir.
But God bless you all, and thank you so much for what you have done for our community. I don't know how you had the time to do this, to start a restaurant, to run a restaurant, to get the excellence and the quality of service that you have, and then pour your heart out in this community.
Yes, sir.
It's great.
Well, thank you.
And I'd like to call upon our Treasurer, not to put you on the spot, sir.
Yeah, he did put me on the spot. I had the pleasure of being the Vice Mayor when they came to town, to open the Chick-fil-A and to be there for the ribbon cutting, and we knew from that moment that they were going to be great citizens in Portsmouth. And I've lived for 27 years, and I can honestly say, no business that I know of has embraced this community the way the Petersons did. You've been not just great, great business people, but great citizens, great partners. You helped us promote this city, and we always knew, and there are a lot of community groups out there who had their events at Chick-fil-A. You give stuff to the schools all the time. You know, I know for a fact that the schools call you, ask for stuff, and want a discount, and you give it to them. Many people can say that. And you've just been great friends to me and my family as well. So I, for the City of Portsmouth, am going to miss you, but I'm personally going to miss you as friends, and I wish you nothing but the very, very best, and I will be coming to Las Vegas. I'll probably spend all my money on the trip to get there, so I may need some help on the chicken. Right. Thank you.
Absolutely. Thank you.
One last thing. As you know, we're interested in a casino, so we're going to send our Director of Economic Development out there to not only recognize the order of the strip, but to see the good job that you're doing in advertising Portsmouth.
Yes, sir. Absolutely.
God bless you all.
Thank you.
I'll hold that, and we want you to...
We just say, hey, eat more chicken. Any success we had here is because of you guys. We love you. We thank you. I don't want to get too emotional, but Portsmouth is home for us, and my wife and I just really, really, really love all of you guys. We always remember this is where we got started. So thank you for your patronage, prayers, and participation. We love each and every one of you guys. So come to Las Vegas, see us, we'll get you a sandwich.
I definitely don't want to be emotional, but I thank everyone. I thank my sorority sisters and all my friends and family that are here, and all of you are that to me, whether I saw you in the drive-thru or here at City Council or wherever in the community. It's just been a wonderful blessing, and you are going to be missed.
Oh, bless your heart. Let's get my hand, folks. Hold on, we're going to take a photograph. Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol for speakers, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. Speakers who fail to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first item of business is under the City Manager's Report, and it's item 19-348, which is the consideration of the adoption of a certain ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance, one, accepting an assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $630,000 from the Department of Homeland Security Federal Emergency Management Agency, and appropriating said amount in the FY 2020 Grant Fund for use by the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services, and two, transferring $63,000 from the FY 2020 General Fund Budget for the Department of Fire, Rescue, and Emergency Services to the FY 2020 Grants Fund to serve as the required local match for the said grant.
Thank you, ma'am. So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption?
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. All ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-349, which is the consideration of the adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting an opioid treatment and recovery grant in the amount of $400,000 from the Virginia Department of Behavioral Health and Developmental Services and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Behavioral Healthcare Services Fund for use by the Department of BHS to provide opioid abuse prevention, treatment, and recovery services.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
No.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor that's been duly made and seconded, ready for discussion. Any discussion on the question? Hearing none. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
And Madam Clerk, our next item is item 19-350, which is the consideration of a ordinance appropriating funds from the General Fund. And Madam Clerk, will you read the caption to that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance authorizing the appropriation of $646,200 from the General Fund, fund balance to the non-departmental benefits retiree supplement line item in the FY 2020 General Fund Budget for the purpose of funding a one-time supplement in the gross amount of $600 to beneficiaries under the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System and the Fire and Police Retirement System.
So that we may consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt? We have a motion? And it has a second. We're now ready to discuss the motion, which is to adopt, and we do have two registered speakers. And the first speaker is Mark Gudalgi Yatroski, and sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council, and fellow interested parties. I would ask you to defer this item until such time as we have a comprehensive annual financial report in hand. You are appropriating money that is presumed surplus from the last fiscal year, but you don't yet have an audited financial report for that fiscal year. I consider this to be premature under those circumstances. In addition to that, you have allocation in here to members of the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System. As you may recall, or you may have heard if you weren't on council at the time, the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System had a Social Security offset provision whereby participants in that benefit program had a reduction of their benefits under the Portsmouth Plan commensurate with half of their Social Security benefit. Council eliminated that provision. The effect of eliminating that provision was to provide hundreds of dollars a month to the participants in the plan going forward for the life of the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement System Plan. Consequently, I don't believe it is necessary... Consequently, I don't believe it is necessary to provide further supplements to those participating in that plan. In addition, the Police and Firefighters Supplemental Retirement Plan should be paying benefits based on the earnings of the plan. The plan is underfunded in accordance with commonly accepted practices. There should be an 80% reserve at minimum. And I would like to say, for point of clarification, 80% is the floor, not the ceiling. For a plan to be fully functional for its entire life, at some point, there needs to be 100% funding. Otherwise, the benefits will have to be paid out of the General Fund. So, with this plan currently being funded below even the 80% floor, the responsible approach would be to take any excess funds that we may determine, following the presentation of the CAFR, and apply them to filling in the gap between the current funding level and the 80% floor. Consequently, I would ask that you defer consideration of this item until we know how much surplus money we really have, and it has been duly audited by the city's auditors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Garland Alexander. And sir, you have five minutes.
Mayor Roach, Vice Mayor, council members, and Dr. Patton. I'm here today to...
Could you speak in the mic, please?
I'm here today to thank Dr. Patton for bringing this up, and counsel for giving it united support in the council meeting previously. And I hope that you'll do that tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any further discussion on the motion, which is to adopt the ordinance? Hearing none. We're ready for the question. All in favor of the question, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-351, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, would you read the caption of that ordinance?
Yes, sir. An ordinance to amend and reordain Article II and Article III of Chapter 30 of the Code of the City of Portsmouth, Virginia by amending Section 30-122 and Section 30-243 for the purpose of conditioning the adjustment of retirement allowances and the payment of supplements under the Portsmouth Supplemental Retirement and the Portsmouth Fire and Retirement System.
So that we can get this matter before us, is there any motion? Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I move that we table 19-351.
Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
A motion to table has been made and duly seconded. Their Roberts Rules of Order allows for no discussion on the motion, so we're ready for the question. All in favor of the question, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Brings us to item 19-352, which is the consideration of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, please read the caption of that ordinance.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $39,186 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to deter driving under the influence of alcohol.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to item 19-353, which is the consideration and adoption of another ordinance. And Madam Clerk, please read that caption, please.
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $6,958 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to increase uses of augment restraint in vehicles.
So that we can consider this matter, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Our next item is 19-354. And would you read the caption of that ordinance, please?
Yes, sir. An ordinance accepting a grant in the amount of $21,234 from the U.S. Department of Transportation, National Highway Traffic Safety Administration through the Virginia Highway Safety Office, and appropriating said funds in the FY 2020 Grants Fund for use by the Portsmouth Police Department to deter speeding.
So that we can get this matter before us, is there a motion to adopt this ordinance?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made and seconded. Ready for the discussion on the motion? Any discussion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Our next item is item 19-355, which is the consideration of the adoption of a resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read that resolution, please, the caption?
Yes, sir. A resolution supporting the City of Portsmouth FY 2021 Revenue Sharing Applications to the Virginia Department of Transportation.
So that we can get this matter before us, is there a motion to adopt the resolution?
Move for adoption.
Second.
Any discussion on this motion that's been made and seconded? We'll do electronic roll call. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries?
Yes, sir.
Our last item is item 19... This is on the City Manager's Report, is item 19-356, which is the consideration of adoption of a certain resolution. And Madam Clerk, will you read that resolution's caption, please?
Yes, sir. A resolution supporting the City of Portsmouth FY 2021 Transportation Alternatives Set Aside Surface Transportation Block Grant Funding Applications to the Virginia Department of Transportation.
So that we can get this matter before us, is there a motion to adopt?
Move for adoption.
Second.
We have a motion that's been made. Councilman Moody, and seconded by Councilwoman Simmons. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. Thank you, sir. That motion carries, Madam Clerk, does it not?
Yes, sir.
Which brings us to new business. Item 19-357, which is the consideration of appointments and reapportments, reapportments to boards and commissions. Councilman Moody?
Thank you, Mayor. I move that the following reapportments and appointments to boards and commissions be approved. The first are reapportments. Board of Building Code Appeals, William Grant. Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority, Bruce Lallande. And one more on the Board of Building Code Appeals, Raymond Wilkins. Okay, the following are appointments. Downtown Design Committee. Danielle Babcheck. Quinnanna Crennington. Nathan Lay. Housing Board of Adjustments and Appeals. Antoinette Anders. Parks and Recreation Commission. Glenn Brooks. Carl Burden. Portsmouth Park and Authority, Roberta Hansel Union. Portsmouth Redevelopment and Housing Authority. Edward Barham IV. Sean Prince. And Renee Wicks. Southeastern Alcohol Safety Action Program, Michael Gray. Social Services Advisory Commission. Kathleen Sutherland. Wetlands Board, Ellen Comstock.
Is there a second to this motion? We have a motion before, since it's been seconded, to make these reapportments and appointments. Any discussion on the question? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries? I think that we do have a need for a Citizens Advisory Committee that's been requested by the SIPSA, the Southeastern Virginia Public Service Authority. And this is a Citizens Advisory Committee. It's not one of our boards and commissions. We are required to do two appointments. Is there... Let's take these one appointment at a time. The Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, sir. I'd like to nominate Mr. Vernon Tillage for the SIPSA Citizen Advisory Committee on Future Landfill Use.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on this motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries? We still have one position, and the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Glover.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to nominate for that same SIPSA Citizen Advisory Committee, Mr. Mark Godoldig Yatroski.
Thank you, sir. Is there a second to that motion? Good. We have a motion on the floor, and it's been seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question? All in favor of the motion, please vote yes. Opposed, no. And Madam Clerk, that motion carries? Thank you. This brings us to item 19-358, items submitted by council members. And the Chair recognizes Councilwoman Simmons.
Thank you, Mayor. We have a couple of items of interest to the public before we meet again. This coming Saturday, September the 28th, we will have a National Recovery Day celebration at the Neighborhood Recreation Facility on Elm Avenue. It's called Fun for the Whole Family. There will be a DJ, balloons, face painting, raffles, music, and that's from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. this coming Saturday, the 28th. There will be a job fair that's open to the public on Wednesday, October the 9th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at that same Neighborhood Recreation Facility on Elm Avenue. You are to bring copies of your resume, dress professionally, and transportation will be provided upon request for PRHA housing residents. For more information, you can call 391-2962. Important to everyone in America, today is actual National Voter Registration Day, and I'll remind everyone that the last day to register to vote in this year's election will be Tuesday, October 15th. So you must be registered to vote by Tuesday, October 15th, to vote in this November's election. And I'll also remind everyone that this council will not be meeting on October 7th and 8th. We cancel those meetings because a majority of council will be out of town at a Virginia Municipal League meeting with other elected officials from all over the state.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next item is report on pending items. Dr. Patton?
Mayor, there are no pending items.
Okay. This brings us to non-agenda speakers. And Madam Clerk, will you read the protocol again, please?
Ladies and gentlemen, City Council rules require a limit of up to five minutes to speak. As you approach the speaker's podium, you will notice a timer. At the beginning of your five minutes, you will see a green light. Four minutes into your remarks, you will notice a yellow light. At the end of five minutes, you will see a red light, hear a beep, and we ask that you conclude your comments at that time. While speakers have an opportunity to address council on matters of public concern, all comments should be made in a manner that respects the seriousness of the forum and should not be made in a belligerent, sarcastic, or demeaning fashion. All remarks should be directed to the City Council as a body, rather than to any particular member of City Council, staff, or the audience, and should be limited to matters that only the Portsmouth City Council can influence. A speaker who fails to observe this basic rule of decorum will be deemed out of order and not allowed to conclude his or her comments.
Thank you, ma'am. Our first speaker is Donna Si. And ma'am, you have five minutes.
Good evening. My name is Donna Si, and I live in the Woodbine Farms neighborhood. Last night, there was a presentation to inform the people of the results of the Poverty Study done by Thomas P. Miller and Associates. I was concerned about the recommendations that this study gave to the City Council members. These recommendations are examples of the warnings that our founding fathers gave us when our country was founded. They wrote warnings to make us aware of a number of temptations which might lure our generation to abandon our freedoms and our rights. They warned us not to subject ourselves to a strong government administration operating towards the collective left or ruler's law. They also warned us about the welfare state. This means that the government endeavors to take care of everyone from cradle to the grave. The founding fathers warned us about seizing of private property for the public treasury, taxation, and deficit spending. They also warned us that the only way for the people to prosper is to have equal protection of rights and not allow the government to get involved in trying to provide equal distribution of things. They also warned us about the pooling of property as advocated by the proponents of communism. Portsmouth has a lot of deficit spending. There was 11.7 million shortfall for the year 2015-16, which caused our real estate taxes to go up three cents to $1.30 per 100. Principles of Liberty 15 states that the highest level of prosperity occurs when there's a free-market economy and a minimum of government regulations. This poverty study does not present a free-market economy. It is expanding government regulations. Next, the Principles of Liberty 17 states that a system of checks and balances should be adopted to prevent the abuse of power. The people's government here in Portsmouth have no checks and balances to prevent the deficit spending and the expansion of the government administration. For example, the hiring of a resiliency officer for $73,000 a year. And this hiring was done through the Capital Improvement Budget, and a page from the budget is attached. Next, Principles of Liberty 20 states that efficiency and dispatch requires government to operate according to the will of the majority, but constitutional provisions must be made to protect the rights of the minority. An example of this lack of protecting the rights of the few is demonstrated at the Planning Commission's public hearing on September the 3rd. The hearing was about the two zoning requests by a developer. One was for rezoning, and one was for a use permit to construct a healthcare center on 12 parcels of land totaling two acres. The 19 homeowners wrote letters to the planning department to oppose this construction of a health center in front of their homes. And the president of the Civic League spoke against this rezoning and use permit at the public hearing. The Planning Commissioners voted for this construction against the homeowner's consent. The developer attended that Civic League meeting on September the 14th, along with some of the employees of the health center. The developer employees believe they have a right to build the health center without the homeowner's consent. The pooling of 12 parcels of land for one developer is a sign that the rights of the few are not being protected. few are not being protected by the elected who affirm they would uphold the Constitution. These are a few examples of how the government of Portsmouth has forgotten the warnings our founding fathers gave us. These warnings were to make us aware of a number of temptations which might lure our generation to abandon our freedom and our rights. Our freedoms and rights have been replaced by collective council administration operating as a ruler's law. The council has created a welfare city. The council has created so much deficit by spending more money than it is receiving. The council is more interested in providing the equal distribution of things rather than protecting the people's rights. The council is allowing the pooling of property as advocated by the proponents of communism. These are just a few examples of how far our local government has moved from protecting the rights and freedom of we the people of Portsmouth.
Thank you, ma'am. Our next speaker is Mark Godolgi Yatroski. And sir, you have five minutes.
Good evening again, Mr. Mayor, honorable members of council and fellow citizens. First, thank you for the appointment. I didn't see that coming, but I appreciate the faith that you've shown. My topic tonight is of jails and waterfronts. Something else I did not see coming was the withdrawal by Armada Hoffler of its unsolicited proposal for building a new parking garage and city hall building. But I was pleased to see it. I'm... You know, I don't see my purpose in life as defending city council. I try to speak the truth as I understand it. And so I was really disturbed by a lot of the chatter about that proposal on social media. Council and the city generally did an appropriate job of publicizing what that was all about. Ms. Si and I, early in the process, had an opportunity to sit in an office here and look at the preliminary proposal, and that was an opportunity that any citizen interested had. As you went along, you had two public hearings that were not mandated by law to allow the public to have a voice. And, you know, I believe that you conducted the process equitably. Yet, there were many people who said, well, where did this come from? And this is months after the first public hearing. Why were there no other bidders? Well, the city advertised for competing proposals. The public has a responsibility to inform itself. This was not a deal done in darkness. So I've had some frustrations about that. People need to avail themselves of the information that is placed before them. At the same time, I've said to you before regarding that proposal that it was the cart before the horse. The 800-pound gorilla, to use a trite phrase, is the jail that's sitting on the Civic Center complex. And a previous sheriff, quite a number of years ago, came before an earlier council and detailed the deficiencies of that building. Well, the building hasn't gotten any younger, and the hardware that has worn out through constant use hasn't gotten refurbished. And so we need to show some responsibility and deal with that problem in a responsible way. And that means working with the current sheriff to come up with a solution to the housing of inmates for this city. So the absence of that Armada Hoffler proposal allows us to approach the redevelopment of the waterfront afresh and seek input. The other thing about, you know, I would say to my fellow citizens, if you didn't like the fact that there weren't more proposals, find somebody to put in an unsolicited proposal dealing with the jail, which the city will have to take up under the laws of the Commonwealth. And let's get this thing done. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That concludes our agenda. We do have a need to go into closed session. You're asking for the floor? And...
Yes, sir. I move to go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A3 for the purpose of discussing the acquisition and disposition of real property. Where discussion in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining position or negotiating strategy of the public body, specifically regarding the Victory Crossing area. And B, pursuant to Virginia Code subsection 2.2-3711A7, for the purpose of consultation with legal counsel pertaining to an actual or probable litigation where such consultation in an open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the city, specifically regarding Michael A. Moore versus City of Portsmouth, case law 19003403 and 19003277.
Second.
We have a motion that's been duly made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Ready for the question. All in favor of the motion, please vote yes, opposed no. Ladies and gentlemen, we're going to go in closed session in three minutes. We'll do that in the conference room. Once we complete our closed session, we'll come out and do the certification in the conference room. We will not return to the council chamber. Thank you for attending. Members of council, please be in the conference room in three minutes.